Okay, good evening. Welcome, and we will commence our meeting with a roll call, please. Ms. Kadel?
Mr. Castillo?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Sharp?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is a closed meeting. Could somebody please read us into a closed meeting? I apologize, the first thing after we start the meeting, we're going to disappear on you for a little bit, so. Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move the Board to commence a closed meeting for the following purposes: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff resignations, staff changes in positions, non-reappointment and advisory committee appointments and reappointments, and student matters under Section 2.2-3711A2, in particular, student residency.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
Aye.
Mr. Sharp?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will now have a closed meeting for a few moments, so please bear with us. I hope this won't take too long. Thanks. Okay, could I get a motion to reconvene the open meeting?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Ankuma?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes.
Ms. Carney? Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Here.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
And would somebody like to certify the closed meeting?
Mr. Chair, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge: one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Call the roll, please?
Yes, please, sir. Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we did a roll call, but we've had a late arrival, so should we do another roll call?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Here.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, if you all please rise and join me in the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, call the roll. Or just do a voice vote, too?
Voice vote is fine.
All in favor of adopting the agenda as proposed? Say aye. Okay. Any abstentions or negative votes? Okay, now, we come to the public comment session. Do we have any public comments? Any speaker slips?
We do not, sir.
Okay. And so now, we move on to recognitions and reports. The first item on the agenda, and I think there's a palpable air of anticipation here, the special appearance of Gertie Giraffe, Thackeray, the Thackeray mascot. Welcome, Gertie. Gertie, come on up and get immortalized here up at the podium, and watch your step, please. We don't want to lose you on day one. Three more steps to the left.
Oh, my goodness. Are we taking a picture?
All right, let's get a picture here. Come on.
Thank you, Gertie.
We're gonna have to get Gertie a GPS or something here.
Yeah, we're taking a picture.
Well done, thank you. All right, next up, we have recognition of the spring student athletes. I see a lot of student athletes out there. Why don't we start with my personal favorite? How about girls soccer? Alice says hi, by the way. Come on up and be recognized.
We're here to represent girls soccer. We're the four seniors. I'm Claire.
I'm Camille.
I'm Erica.
And I'm Rebecca.
So, our season so far this year, so far, because it's still going on, has been great. We won, well, there wasn't a district tournament because of all the snow, but we won the, like, overall district, regular season districts. And then, we also were conference champs and regional champs this past Friday. And then, we're going down to Radford on Thursday to compete in the state tournament, so hopefully, we'll bring another trophy back. That's the plan, anyway. We've, we have, like, so many talented players. We had a ton of people named to teams for districts and conferences and regionals. We had eight girls on first and second team for all of those. So that's huge for us, and, yeah, we went on, we're undefeated this season, which, yeah, that hasn't happened in a very long time, so that's been great. And we want to thank our parents for supporting us, and our coaches, and the school board, because we couldn't have done it without you guys.
Well, thank you, and good luck to you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, how about, next up, boys tennis? Coach Metz hours?
Hi, my name is Yosh Kagal. I'm representing boys varsity tennis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of George Mason Boys Tennis Team. We ended up having three freshmen, six sophomores, one junior, and six seniors this year on the team. Our record this year is 15 wins and two losses. The senior class helped win three regional championships, state title in 2010, 2011, and 2012, and over 250 total wins. Vincent Camacho, David Drawbaugh, Jacob Field, Nate Jones, and Jacob Morris, and Rohan Rana are our seniors this year. Some of our postseason highlights, our team took second at regionals this year. We advanced to the state tournament at Radford after winning the state semifinal match this week versus Glenvar High School. Jacob Morris is in the state singles tournament, and Nate Jones and Jacob Morris are in the state doubles tournament. We want to thank a few people for their support this season. We appreciate all you do to support our winning program: Dr. Jones, Mr. Byrd, Mr. Hills, Mr. Horn, Ms. Braven, Nancy Hendrickson, bus drivers Bob and Daryl, Ms. Gallagher, school board members, our fans, and our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, girls tennis. Coach Alex Ware, come on up.
Hi, so we're part of the tennis team, and I'm Dana.
I'm Peggy.
I'm Katie.
I'm Madison. And we're the seniors on the tennis team. And first, we wanted to thank you for our beautiful new courts. Thank the administrators for coming out to some of our matches, the parents and the coaches who supported us throughout the season, the athletic boosters for helping us fund our, for our uniforms, and without everyone's support, our season wouldn't have been the same. So Peggy will talk about our season.
We had a fantastic season. We won districts, conference, we placed second at regionals, and we made it to the state semifinals. And we worked so hard, and it wouldn't have been possible without our two new coaches, Coach Ware and Coach Ferreira. It's been so much fun, and without their support, we wouldn't have been able to go as far as we did. And our number-one singles, Kennedy Mooney, and our number-one doubles, Kennedy and Carrington Mooney, will be traveling to Radford in hopes of winning states. So we wish them luck, and we know they'll do great. This season, we had 18 girls, which is huge, and many of them are freshmen, and there's a lot of young talent, and although the team will be losing six seniors, we know they'll do great, and hopefully, they'll win states next year. So lastly, thank you to everyone who supported us and helped us get to where we need. So, thank you so much.
Okay, next up, boys soccer. Coach Spinellas.
Hi, I'm Brian Connolly.
And we're two seniors on the boys soccer team, and so far, our season has been stellar. We've won the regular season, we've won the conference championship, and the region championship. And we have states, the state championship tournament, next, or this coming weekend, down at Radford. And hopefully, we'll get our second state championship in a row. We won last year, and hopefully, this year we'll win again. And I'd like to thank the school board, Dr. Jones, all the coaches and parents, and students for coming out, supporting us at all our games.
All right, well, thank you very much. Okay, and then, last, we have Coach Harvey and boys and girls all-state athletes.
Thank you, school board, and thank you for the recognition of our fantastic team. I want to be, have the pleasure of introducing the two state champions, Tara Holman and Truman Custer. They're gonna speak.
Greetings, school board members, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and all the coaches and students who are here tonight. On behalf of the track and field team, I want to thank you all for your efforts and continual support. Without it, we would not have the means to accomplish the success that we've had this year. In efforts to respect your time, I would like to share with you a few highlights from the season, but undoubtedly, the first highlight, if not the most instrumental, would be receiving Coach Harvey as our coach. For those who are unaware or unknowledgeable about her success, her resume extends beyond accomplishing state titles for herself, but also, she was an elite athlete, an internationally recognized runner. She's participated in the Pan Olympic Games, the Olympic Trials, and many other notable track and field events. However, after sharing numerous two-to-three-hour practices, four-hour bus rides, I've noticed along with my fellow athletes, that it's not just Coach Harvey's knowledge of track and field that's really achieved the girls' track and field conference title when we haven't received a single championship in over 13 years. It's not simply her knowledge that brought an impressive 21 athletes to the state meet, or gained seven new records, or trained two state champions. Along with her knowledge, it's her warmth, her passion, her unwillingness to receive anything but the best from myself and my fellow athletes. So that's why I'm standing here, and I'm gonna thank her tonight. I'm very proud of our accomplishments, and I really hope that we can continue this. And I want to thank you guys also as well.
Hi, I'm Truman Custer. I'm here to represent the boys team. Guys, stand up. With a combination of these guys and the other JV players, or JV runners and the other varsity runners, we had one of the most successful seasons that we've ever had at Mason. The last time that we've scored this much at the state meet was back in 2006, when we had about four individual state title runners. And so, this year was really a good showing for the city of Falls Church and George Mason High School. And, you know, we wouldn't have done it without your support, and we really appreciate everything that you guys do for us, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, well, thank you again, and congratulations on great seasons, and great seasons yet to finish. We now will go on the next item on the agenda to recognition of student liaisons. Let's see, we have Maeve Curtin. We'd like to, in addition to everything else that you do, Maeve, you're the liaison to the gifted and talented committee, and we'd just like to give you a certificate to recognize you and thank you for all you've done. And then also, from the ESOL Committee, do we have Huri Chow and Giovanna Burdisso? Are they here tonight? Come on up. Okay, and maybe we can get a picture as well here. All right, thank you again for your service to the boards. Appreciate that. All right, next on the agenda are the annual reports to the school board. Dr. Jones?
Mr. Castillo?
Yes.
Sorry, can I just say one thing about that real quick?
Absolutely, Ms. Curtin, please.
I just want to thank all the athletes for being here. You guys can leave, for sure. It'll be a long meeting, but hang on one second. Congratulations to you all, and especially Hori and Giovanna. Thank you guys so much for serving on the ESOL Committee. Next year, we're gonna have a lot more students on all of the school board advisory committees, so that's gonna be a way for some of the underclassmen who are here tonight, if you want to get involved in more school board stuff. That'll be a wonderful way for you guys to get involved in that. So hopefully, next year, we'll have more people getting those recognitions and reports. And have a good night, guys.
And have a good night, guys.
Yes, thank you all again. Shall we adopt the consent agenda by voice vote? Any objections?
Someone?
Okay, thank you.
Was there an item on the agenda that you wanted to remove?
We just discussed clarification.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
All right, the next item on the agenda... Yes, Mr. Kimball? I think we did it by a voice vote? Yes. Were there any abstentions or disagreement, or no votes? No, okay. Next, we move to the approval of the appointment of the student liaison to the school board. And Dr. Jones, do you have a recommendation for us?
We are very excited to be recommending Zach tonight to step into Maeve's shoes. And I told him he has big shoes to fill, and we're very excited to have him. So if we could approve him, and then they will actually swear you in in just a moment.
Okay, does anybody on the board have any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move that the Falls Church City Public School Board approve the appointment of Zach Whitzel as student liaison to the school board from July 1st, 2014, to June 30th, 2015.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think, could we do a roll call? I think it's...
We can do a roll call, certainly.
Certainly, certainly. Mr. Castillo?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Great.
It's official. Welcome. Mr. Kimball, could we swear Mr. Whitzel in?
I'll stand where you do, where you are, if you want to stand over here. Could you raise your right hand? Do you, Zachary Whitzel, solemnly affirm that you will support the mission of the Falls Church City Public Schools, endeavor to serve all students in your decisions and actions, and will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform the duties incumbent upon you as the student liaison of the school board, according to the best of your ability, so help you God?
Yes.
Congratulations, welcome.
We're not done with you yet. Come on up.
Congratulations, please.
Congratulations, and welcome.
Congratulations, welcome.
Picture.
I would just like to say that I'm sad to see Maeve go, but I'm welcome to see you come on board, and I think you've started off on a very positive note, very proactive, very communicative, and looking forward to working with you. Does anybody else have any comments? Mr. Webb?
I had the pleasure to meet with Zach over the weekend just before, and I gave him the, I think he's going to do a great job, but as I told him, he's a budding politician doing what all nominees have to do, meeting with all the folks who will be voting on his appointment to be the student liaison. So I'm like, as I've told Maeve many a times, budding politicians coming up through George Mason that know the area that they live in and have learned how to maneuver in those corridors. But we look forward to working with you this upcoming year.
Anyone else? Mr. Lawrence?
I would just like to say that the point about meeting with people was something that, you know, Zach knew he had to do, and his dad said, "Well, I'm not really sure. You might be, you know, bugging them and annoying them." And he had the right instinct, because, you know, he knows he's going to be with us for a year, and it's a punishment for some, but I think he's going to be good. And Maeve set up a meeting about, what, four, six weeks ago where we met, and he was actually foolish enough to take Maeve's advice, which is to say, you know, see if John would be your mentor, and I agreed to do that. So I'm looking forward very much to this year. I think it's going to be great.
Anyone else? Okay, well, again, welcome, board, and I hope you know what you're getting yourself into here.
Congratulations, Zach. I know you're going to do a wonderful job, and I am so happy that I'm leaving this position in your, not that I'm leaving this position.
Yeah, don't pause.
There's a very important part at the end there, in your hands, and I know you're just going to be amazing. You're a perfect candidate for the job, and I'm so glad that you wanted to fill this role. And I feel like the student liaison position is going to be something that's very important to the Falls Church City Public School system, and I'm glad that we're starting off so strong. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you again. The next item on the agenda, and by the way, I don't think we should let it go unremarked, thank Mr. Lawrence for really taking the lead and activating the student liaison, which I think was a great move, and I think one that had great and very substantial benefits for this school board. I think it's also something I'm looking forward to seeing spread to the advisory committees, because I think it's a great opportunity to get some vital input. So, thank you again, Mr. Lawrence. The next item on the agenda is a sad one. It's a resolution in honor of Steve Sprague for his contributions to the Falls Church City Public Schools. Mr. Sharp, would you like to give us some of your thoughts about this sad passing?
It is quite a loss to our community, and particularly to the schools. And I'm pleased to be able to say a few words, having known Steve for a number of years, and known the family since I was a soccer coach for Beth Sprague in her elementary-grade years. But there's a very, very good article discussing Steve's contributions to the political side of the community, the social service side, that Phil Duncan and our Commissioner of Revenue, Tom Clinton, and also Sally Eckfeldt, who was a chair of the school board here, they combined to provide a very good statement of Steve's many contributions on the civic side, particularly with the Housing Corporation, with CBC and others. On the resolution that we have here tonight, there's a really, really good set out of his contributions to the school community. And one of the most poignant parts of the award ceremony last week was the giving of an award from his family to one of our students, a scholarship form. And so his legacy lives on beyond just the very unfortunately short period that he was able to be with us. But he also contributed greatly to his church, the Duel and Methodist Church. And from that side, I think when you consider the memoriam's that he's requested as contributions, the two that he's requested, one is to the schools, to the scholarship program that I mentioned, and that donations to that can go to the Falls Church Education Foundation. But the other is an endowment for the Duel and United Methodist Church. I think those two requests reflect some of his priorities. I'll just mention, since I don't know that anyone else has covered that aspect of it, the Duel and Church is a unique contributor to this community. Over many, many years, and on many, many occasions, with six-figure contributions to activist groups in this community, the church has been just such a strong supporter of those who are in need in our community and in the surrounding area. And Steve was a big, big part of that. He was not often in a leadership role, but he was always in a strongly contributing role. And all of these successes that he participated in, both at the schools and at his church and in civic life, live on. He will be with us and remembered for a very, very long time. Thank you.
And with that, may I have a motion?
Sorry, my, mine is not moving very quickly. I move that the school board approve and adopt Resolution 06-14, Resolution in Honor of Steve Sprague for his contributions to the Falls Church City Public Schools in memoriam as presented. Thank you.
Second. Why don't we take a voice vote on this, please?
Certainly, sir. Mr. Castillo?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to make some comments on this resolution? Mr. Webb?
Just second to what Karen was just saying about Steve. I got to know Steve a little over the last few years, more so through his activity with CBC, and as well as I actually attend dueling fairly regularly here in the city, my partner and I. And just to see Steve and his involvement in the city of being a person who has just became the fabric of what Falls Church is all about, of being active in the community, Steve, from the Housing Corporation to his church, to CBC, to the schools, and Falls Church Education Foundation. Steve is Mr. Everything in Falls Church, and definitely we're going to miss him in this community. But his mark will always be felt here, and he's made sure of that through the church as well as the scholarship that's going to be coming through the Falls Church Education Association. So his legacy will continue to live on in our community for a long time to come. But we definitely saw, felt a big loss when Steve passed away, but we all know that he's in a much better place, and Falls Church will continue to have him as a part of our community.
Thank you. And I would second that. I think the work that he's done, again, I think some of the things that we see about Falls Church, what's great on all fronts is the amount of involvement and commitment to the community, and I think his legacy is one of the shining examples of that. Ms. Curtin, did you, I don't want to overlook you, I apologize if I have, okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda, discussion of budget advocacy with senators and delegates. Ms. Ward, would you like to, or Mr. Sharp? Why don't we start with you, Ms. Ward, about this?
So, to help support our representatives in getting this budget passed, this impasse passed, I've drafted a letter as an individual to mail to our representatives stating my position as a parent of a student who attends Virginia Public Schools, teacher in Virginia Public Schools, and as a member of the Falls Church City School Board. I basically stated my position in this and encouraged them to please help get this budget passed, so we can hire people. I presented it here to all of you, so you can take a look at it if you would like to use it as a template for creating your own letter. I decided to go ahead with the individual letter after speaking with Tony. Apparently, the more letters we send, the more impact it will have. So I'm not opposed to doing one from the board, but I think it's also a good idea if we write them individually as citizens of Falls Church City.
Mr. Webb, do you have it?
I support that, but things have very quickly changed in this budget impasse, as today, they will be passing a budget because of a member of the General Assembly who resigned, and then, and overall, it changed the entire dynamic of the battle, because by that one member resigning, the state senate is now in the other party's control, and the budget will be passed without the Medicaid expansion being a part of it right now. So I think it's still good for us to at least let them know our position on this, but it definitely has changed from as quickly as Sunday to today.
Well, that was the best project I'd never had to complete. Thank you. Thank you for that information.
Any thoughts on, I think there may be some value, I know you've done a lot of hard work on this. I think in the unlikely event that we run into this again, it might be worth having some note for the record here about how things should be conducted in the future. Any thoughts as to the value of that, or has this been overtaken by events?
I would just say that letting your representative know what you support can never be a mistake. I mean, we both know that, you know, SAS Law and Simon support what we support, but even if they hadn't had the change that we had in the last, you know, seventy-two hours, you know, they need to know how many people support what they already support, because it gives them ammunition going in, because otherwise, you know, somebody says, "Well, what are you hearing?" And they're saying, "Well, you know, I've got a couple letters in favor, and I've got a whole bunch of people who really hate it." Then it weakens their position with their colleagues. So despite the change, and despite the fact that they already support it, the more, the better, frankly.
Any other thoughts?
I think Mr. Lawrence stated it very well, and we have some very fine examples from Margaret and from the V S B A to work from, and I encourage all of us to follow through and get your letters out.
Ms. Curt?
I think, looking at this, I plan on writing a letter just from the student's perspective. Obviously, it's not as much of a pressing need, but seeing as my current position as a graduating senior, I should be able to get something done pretty quickly and just get it down to them, and just, you know, for future use as well. So, thank you for doing that, Mrs. Ward.
And I do think it is important to make it clear that this is no way to run a railroad, and that we even were having this conversation, I think, is not a good sign. I think one of the fundamental aspects of self-governance is governing, and passing a budget, I think, is part and parcel of that. So I think it is good to make this clear for the record, so that we never find ourselves in a similar position again. So I encourage everyone, and people in the community as well, to make your voices heard. Next on the agenda is a review of ordinance language for the Mount Daniel Project. Dr. Jones?
This is really just making sure that the school board can see that we are moving forward with what we need to do behind the scenes on behalf, we're working with the city staff. They did have first reading on Monday night, so, you know, read this carefully, and it went through a lot of tweaks, working, you know, with the attorney and making sure everything was just right. The second reading will be on July 14th, and again, that matches that timeline that we sent out, you know, initially, to make sure that we're ready for referendum in November. And so everything is on target, and also trying to avoid, you know, anything in August, so that if the judge was on vacation and we can't get stuff signed, we don't get stuck into a corner. So, and again, the ordinance is for the Mount Daniel Project, which we will have ASAP Committee, look at the three final proposals... look at the three final proposals on July 10th and then be bringing a request with, I think it's that next two weeks, the meeting after that, to the school board based on what the ASAC committee and everybody thinks is the best proposal from the three finalists. And we're very excited for those of us that are on the committee about what we're seeing. So we think we will have a great proposal to bring to the school board.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Lawrence?
Just one clarification because some board members have asked. There are three finalists, the board will see all three. The ASAC will say this one is our recommendation, but this board will see all three finalists. So it's not that you're only going to get to see one.
Yeah, you don't really see them and yet, because then on July 10th, you're welcome to come. I mean, it's an open meeting, so if you really want to see detail, because each one takes an hour and they'll do an hour proposal. So what happens with ASAC is they bring the recommendation to the school board and then he'll give you the synopsis of what the other two were like, you know, what the committee liked about them, what they found is not positive maybe about them. But the focus is really on that final proposal that the whole team feels like should come to the school board. So if you really want to see the whole three hours, I would encourage you to come that night because they are fun to watch. But I think we're going to have a great proposal that really, you know, rises to the top and feel great about the process.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Any other comments, Mr. Sharp?
Yeah, I just want to thank John and Tony, especially leading the charge on this, overcoming some very, very extraordinary circumstances that really should have delayed this project beyond where it is and instead it's accelerated to the point where we anticipate being able to enter a new school in a very, very short period of time in a relative sense. And we had weather problems, we had meeting difficulties, partly the weather was a contributor there, but just getting the different components of the community together for these meetings, the different contractors, all of the proposal timeline was pushed back a couple of times. And we also had a change in the board during this time period, which our leadership had to deal with, Susan and John and Tony. And that was an extraordinary circumstance that we didn't have the last time that we were trying to prepare for this, when it was Mary Ellen Henderson instead of Mount Daniel. Getting a referendum prepared and getting it launched and then getting it to be a success requires a great deal of effort and coordination and we're off to a great start. Thank you.
Mr. Webb?
I also want to echo and thank Tony and John for their work on this. I was at the meeting last evening and I know they want us to come and do a bit of a dog and pony show of why we feel and the importance of this project for not only the members of the city council, but citizens who may have questions of this referendum that I'll be coming forward to as to why enrollment growths and those type of things of why we feel that this is the right time to move forward with this project. But definitely, it is the right time and I'm happy that we're at this point that we're going to be moving forward.
Anyone else, Ms. Ward, Ms. Curtin? Okay. Well, thank you for that then, Dr. Jones. The next item on our agenda concerns approval of school board appointments to the George Mason MEH Process Planning Steering Committee. There has been a committee in place for the last several months that has been setting out a roadmap, if you will, a set of procedures and gates to go through as we move ahead to build a new high school and eventually develop part of the current George Mason High School site that was brought within the city boundaries. The brief for that committee is coming to an end and there is now going to be a follow-on committee. And we are addressing now the composition of the school board members who will be on that committee. It also consists of two city council members, a member of the planning commission and a member of the E D A. Its purpose is managerial and coordinative to be a sort of traffic cop for the process. So, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I wonder, in light of the close connection between this item and the following one, if we might have a consideration of the two items together and then a vote on the approval as it's, as is indicated in the initial item. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a second there? Does anybody have a?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Are we going to have the discussion of both items and then vote upon them? Because I'm trying to make a clarification.
The second item is strictly discussion and the initial item is one that we would vote on, vote an approval of appointments. But I think they're very closely related and I'd suggest taking them together.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, sure, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will now, we will then consider the discussion of the George Mason MEH planning in advance of that. We have two documents before us. We have a resolution establishing a steering committee and a draft process roadmap dated June 5th. There has been a process within this committee to set forward the process roadmap. There have been comments from the school board, I'm not sure what comments there have been on the city council side. I believe the draft we have before us is the most recent. And in addition, there is a resolution establishing a steering committee. And so with that, I will open it up for discussion.
I also have this, I need to add this piece for planning.
Okay. In addition, do you want to circulate a copy of that, Ms., Dr. Jones? Has copies of a document that seeks to, it's a, it's a draft agreement. Perhaps, Dr. Jones, you can describe this.
Sure.
And this will, this will go on board docs as well.
Yes, yes. And that's, I'll explain why we're just passing it out now. Part of the work on this, on the planning from the school board members who have been sitting in, listening to all of the meetings, one request has been, we really need to find out what that 70, 30% could or would, could look like on that main campus because we want to make sure that, you know, our decision-making is based around what's best for children and best for our school. To make sure that, for instance, we have space for, you know, the fields that we need and that the school is the right size. And so what we're looking at is a proposal. Arcadis happens to be a very large company who we have a contract with right now. They have one of the largest firms under their umbrella, which is RTKL. They've done a lot of work all around Tyson's Corner, know the area well. And what we're looking to do and move forward is the modeling aspect where they will actually come in, look at the acreage and say, and give them the task to say, can you fit everything that we need? High-level model, this is not real detailed stuff as far as what a building looks like, but can you fit a building on that 70% and really challenge the architects to see what they can do? What this proposal, what you're looking at on the second page, you'll see some handwritten notes. That's because I just got this yesterday, requested some more changes after meeting with Susan and John yesterday. Justin and I met this morning on it. Justin, Susan and John both thought adding a fourth model instead of just doing three would be recommended. And Justin also added he would love to see when they model, some sort of cost analysis. And what that means is if they give us a really compacted footprint for a school and let's say they put a practice soccer field on top of parking, you know, and do multi-level parking, something very unique, really compacts the footprint, so it fits in the 70%, but isn't going to be cost prohibitive because it's so expensive to go with that design versus a more traditional design. And so they look at all of those just different components of how they can utilize the land. And this is the work they do and it's what they specialize in. The other thing you'll notice is on the third page in where there's actually, I've marked out three and put four, and again, the gentleman that actually was, would update this document was in Dubai today, and so he couldn't, he couldn't have access. And then the other thing is on, when it says a new high school, they had put 320,000 square feet just to model what that would look like. They, it said four-story, we don't want to have any constraints on stories or anything like that. It's what can you do with the program of what we need to fit on that property? So this is basically a first step for us in our planning to really advise us so that we're getting great information from experts in the field about really what is doable with 70%.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jones.
You're welcome.
But before we open it up for discussion, I would just like to make a couple of clarifications for the community. And that is, Dr. Jones mentioned 70, 30. Under the terms of the sale of the water system to Fairfax County, the George Mason High School and Mary Ellen Henderson property is owned by the school system and the city in part and has been brought within now the boundaries of the cities of Falls, city of Falls Church. Under the terms of the agreement with Fairfax County, up to 30% of that can be developed for noneducational purposes. The remainder must be used for educational purposes for the next 50 years. And so just with that clarifying background, I'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Lawrence?
I would just say that this came out of the process planning committee that we've had so far that's gone slower than Susan and I had hoped for, but given the normal pace things happen in Falls Church, this is probably light speed compared to, you know, what might have happened. So this really responds to concerns that people had, I know that Tony and Susan and I had and others on the school board had, that, you know, we weren't looking at this as a school project, which is what it really is. I think when people voted to, you know, agree to the referendum, they saw the land coming in and they saw having the ability to develop some of the land as a way to give money to build a school. So the first thing we have to do is see how would a school fit there? We may not be able to afford the ideal school, but we at least need to make sure that we know what the school needs are and nothing else is, you know, driving the car rather than the schools. So that's, that's really the genesis of it. And maybe that, you know, we look at it and we can't afford the ideal, so we take it down and maybe sell a little more land, but the idea here is to really make it so that we, as the school board and the city, as the city, know what the schools really will need and what are some ideas about where to put it, how to fit it. But they are just ideas, not set in stone. And I think that was one of the concerns that the city council members was, people are going to look at this and say, oh, this is what you're going to put there. And we're going to have to do some explaining once people do see what comes out to say, these are ideas. We've still got, you know, years to go before we get there. But I think this is a very, very good place to start because we need to know what we need to have.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Other thoughts and comments? Mr. Sharp?
I'll say thank you again for pushing to get this accomplished in the most expeditious way and, but also to do it with a very, very sound decision-making process. Let me mention that on, I haven't read this thoroughly because I'm just receiving it, but on, on the page where it says project understanding, in the second paragraph, there is also a mention of three alternatives.
Okay.
Which now should be four alternatives.
Yeah.
If I read the minutes correctly for the process planning committee, there was a point at which, Tony, I believe you presented a program description.
Mm-hmm.
And I wonder if that program description is, sort of subsumed within this effort that RTKL would be undertaking for us? Is that?
The square footage, because they're blocking and so all of the program for the 1,500 student high school is included with the 320,000 square feet. And we also, I ask, as I was working with Bob, Bob Jones with Arcadis, to please include the pool because in the community visioning, we heard that really loudly and clearly and it, it's one of those things that as you, you know, get into a process, you can always take things out, but I thought if we were going to model, we needed to go with what the community had shared with us last summer at the visioning. That was very strong.
So the 320,000 square feet does not include any square footage devoted to the pool area?
No, it actually, the way it's written in here is it's 323,000 square feet, high school with additional space provisions for a pool. So, and the reason we wrote it that way is that, you know, you may very well have the pool not part of the actual school building, it could be on top of the parking or something creative that they come up with, so.
We might use the Bedford Falls model.
Oh, yes. Open the floor.
Is that the idea?
Other questions or comments? I would say one of the, one of the issues that's been difficult is having an anchor, a way to begin organizing, crystallizing thoughts around how to proceed has been difficult. There's a bit of a chicken and egg issue with respect to the school and development. I think this is a positive step forward that I think, as Dr. Jones has said, is a notional set of alternatives, nothing definitive, but simply some, some way for us to begin to conceptualize what some of the issues are. I would also note that Task Three has a commercial use test fit component, so this isn't occurring in a vacuum, it's not a schools-only exercise. It's, and nor is it a prescription for what's going to be done commercially, but I think it's, it's taking a holistic view of the issue. I do think, in addition, one of the issues that we'll begin grappling with is what are the trade-offs? If we build a denser, more compact school to make more space available, what will the incremental costs be for that? Because a sprawling school with one level is probably less expensive than something else. And so we need to begin to understand what some of those trade-offs will be. So that, that dispenses then with the, with the draft agreement. Comments or questions about either the resolution or the draft process roadmap? And Dr. Jones, this, we are discussing these right now still, they're, the, these are not definitive documents, is that correct?
Well, Arcadis is.
The Arcadis is, yes.
Right. And in the resolution, the steering committee resolution, the city hasn't actually voted on their side yet.
Okay.
We could go ahead if we're comfortable with the resolution. The roadmap is still in draft, simply because city council had not given their comments. We incorporated school board comments, but not city council.
Okay. Any questions or comments about the roadmap?
Well, yeah.
Mr. Sharp?
Are we staying with this for a minute?
Well, no, let's do one thing at a time. So the Arcadis document, any other thoughts about that?
Yeah, I am, I am pleased that there's consideration of a multiple-story structure, higher density than certainly what we have with the existing school. I was chatting with Dick Eckfeldt, Sally Eckfeldt's husband, about his experience, his high school in Nebraska, where you might not expect a multiple-story school to be needed for conserving land space, but he attended a four-story high school in Nebraska as a youngster 40-some years ago. So it is, it isn't unusual to find that kind of thing happening in places where, you know, you might not, might not think they, they would be placed. Here, we have some examples, of course, of the District of Columbia and that's, that's where you would anticipate it and I'm glad that there's been some arrangements for us to go and visit at places where they already have recently constructed these kinds of facilities. We should be able to get some reasonable ideas of what current construction looks like and how it fits on particular parcels and all that. I do hope that the city council members will also have a chance to take part in this kind of exercise and that other members of the community might as well, that as we go along with the Arcadis process, which I, which I support, I hope that, you know, many, many others will have a chance. will have a chance to see the process unfold and certainly to comment on the results. I wonder, is this a contract that is already underway or what's the status of?
When I actually first spoke to Susan about it, and then obviously with Justin and John, we do want to move forward. And it was just to make sure the tenor of the board supports this work and that we just need to make these minor tweaks so that we can get the work started. One of our goals was not to lose time in the summer because we do take a break. And this process, I did meet with the city manager, with Mr. Shields yesterday. So he reviewed the proposal. When we have a kickoff meeting, we'll invite everybody there, you know, for that initial meeting. Again, when they're presenting, we'll make sure the process planning committee, all the school board will be in that loop as well. So we do want to move forward so that we don't lose time. Time just goes so quickly. And even with our, it's taken a while just to plan for the plan.
Here, here.
So, Dr. Jones, when is your hoped-for signature date for this and the completion date?
Because it seems supportive tonight. I tend to work this way. I'll be working on it tomorrow. And we will try to get it signed as quickly as we can. And then we have that five to, really five to eight weeks out, you know, depending on the timing. We are going into summer. I want to make sure we can get the kickoff date, you know, on the right. And it may be that our kickoff meeting, I actually grouped that with one of our work sessions because we already have that date blocked off. And it would give the school board probably the best opportunity for everybody to be there, working around vacations and things that happen in the summer.
Okay, thank you.
We already have funding identified for this contract?
We do. And really, the funding is in the CIP. And that's kind of been a discussion as well. Because last year, the school board asked for $500,000 in the FY14 CIP, and that got removed. We did ask for $500,000 again this year for planning. That was reduced to 250. As we've gone through this planning process committee, at first, there was discussion that this pot of money could only be, not only be spent, that's probably too harsh, but was going to be a decision of steering committee or planning committee. And we did remind the city that the school board asked for the funding. It's actually school funding in the CIP. And the city manager and I sat down and agreed that we need stuff done on the city side and we need it done on the school side and that we can take that 250 so that Mr. Shields has 125 to start pooling all the information we need on parts of the land. And there's somebody that he has to contract with and gives us 125 right now as a budget. And at our next process planning committee, they've asked for both of us to bring how we're budgeting that out for this year. So that's where we are on the financing. So it is there.
Okay. So any other questions on the Arcadis document? It sounds as if there are, if you have any other comments or observations, get them into Tony by tomorrow. All right. The two other documents before us, there's the resolution as well as the process roadmap. Any questions or comments regarding either of those documents? Mr. Sharp?
Mr. Sherman, as I understand, the resolution document is one that is historical at this point, not something that's changeable. It's one that we've already adopted, right? The draft plan is one that's, that is still in a formative stage. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, there were some requested comments. Can you point out where some of the comments might be reflected that were made? This is a June 5 update, and the previous one that we saw before comments was, well, an earlier date. Can you help us understand what changes have been made since the earlier?
Right. And Mr. Lawrence, feel free to chime in. There are quite a few tweaks. Some of them were wordsmithing, kind of language tweaks. Let me see if I can, I don't think this version was redlined, but when it came back from the city.
Yeah, this one is redlined.
Oh, okay, good.
Well, while you're looking, I think some of the major changes that we asked for were actually small words. We asked that a lot of, the verb "may" was changed to "will" or "shall." So in terms of, for example, reporting back to the respective bodies, what we say is the representatives will report back to their bodies. And we made it much more active voice and determinative rather than sort of squishy and, you know, just wishing people would do things.
Other questions? Mr. Sharp, Mr. Webb, Ms. Ward, Ms. Kurt?
Well, I'll just point out that there is a red insertion here discussing a visit by Mary Filardo, Executive Director, 21st Century School Fund, bringing some experience to the attention of the committee concerning private-public partnership type of development.
Right. The correction there was, they, when Wyatt had drafted this, he just forgot that she had been a speaker. So that was just adding in a speaker who had already spoken, but just hadn't been listed in the original draft.
Okay. Well, as I was reading through the minutes, her comments were particularly persuasive, I thought, of why it's important for a program from the school side to be set out at an early time and developed and attempted to be placed on the property and be available for discussion and comment. And so I support all of that. The concern that I have is that the steering committee's process is intended to be a coordinating one. And there is not a, at least at this time, a committee forum to look at what the program substance would be. And I would like to recommend that there, that one be developed to do that with participation from a variety of different components of the staff and of SAO and advisory group members from our constituency. And that they have, you know, I would suggest that they come in at a point where there is a draft of something for them to comment on, rather than having them come in and try to create the chicken or the egg by, you know, by themselves. I think this expert will be very useful in facilitating a process that could allow for a group to usefully comment on the kinds of drawings that the expert is coming up with.
Can I comment on that?
Dr. Jones?
Yeah. You know, when you sit on these committees, I know everybody hears different things, so I can only give you what my perspective is from the person that's probably going to be charged with the work, I think, to organize this. And when I sit on the committee, I see the steering committee very much as, it really, they're not supposed to be a decision-making body. And they've talked a lot about that, that everything comes back to the school board or the city council. And we're trying to work collaboratively and jointly together. And Mr. Shields and I have had very, you know, very straightforward conversations that the school must have a schools representative. I know the city's going to have a school representative. That you can't even have one person who's really looking out for school interest 110%, like Bob does with Arcadis, and then have somebody who's looking out for economic development, because they're going to side with one or the other. So we're really working on that so that when the steering committee starts, then the steering committee would charge, you know, me as the school superintendent, to be able to, and I'm going to say the ASAC committee because everybody can visualize that, but getting a big, you know, collection of people together that would then start working on that detailed program. And I would envision that we would want people from the business industry, you know, talking about STEM and what a building of the future, what we want that to look like, inviting experts in for, you know, that really are in building design, looking at lots of different buildings across the country and across the world. So that piece, the steering committee would, we would decide as a steering committee to say, okay, this is the next thing. You've got to figure out what the school needs to look like. And the school would be leading on that piece. While the city side, you know, I have no interest, not that I don't have any interest, I don't have the expertise, to go and deal with Womata and do all the things that Wyatt and his team are going to need to do. And that we're constantly working and coming back and sharing with the school board, sharing with city council, that we're getting these working groups. But to me, that comes just after we just, this planning, this plan, this steering committee starts. When I look at the roadmap, that's how I interpret it. And John or Justin may have a different point of view, but.
Maybe I can clarify that. I wasn't suggesting that the steering committee should be the one to focus on what Arcadis drafts.
Right.
I was suggesting that a different committee.
Right.
One that is oriented at the schools.
Yeah.
Should be put together to be able to comment on the draft that Arcadis puts together. And that that, I think reasonably could converge in terms of timing so that Arcadis has a chance to do the drafting over the summer and this school committee could be ready to make comments in the fall when the draft has been developed.
I think they're two different pieces. And I think when I present the budget, Mr. Sharp, the first piece is the blocking. And that's really what this proposal is. It's where you take the 320,000 square feet, and they're really trying to block that. They're trying to block the pool, the square footage that you need for, you know, a football field, and fit all of those pieces on the land. Then, once we get that and we know, gosh, we can do this four different ways, or wow, it doesn't work at all unless we're willing to give up this and this and this. Then the next step that, once that steering committee has started, I think it's a, we're going to be very well informed as a steering committee to know what the next step needs to be. And the next step from the school side is going to have to be drilling that down. So we know we need a high school that fits X amount of kids. And then that whole committee work starts with a totally different group of people. So I think we're saying the same thing. I just see the steering committee starting, and then it's like we're able to take off with that process and really get in and look at what the school would look like. Does that help?
Yeah, it does. I think it's perhaps a line or two to be inserted in the roadmap to indicate that there will be this point at which a school-based committee is making comment on the drafting that's been put together by the Arcadis folks.
I'm going to make one more, just for clarification. Because Arcadis is doing this work right now, and I love Arcadis. I mean, I think they support us a lot. But we may get ready to drill down and be able to, you know, really look at details of a school. We may need a different firm. Arcadis may still be involved as owner's representative, but it may be a totally different consultant firm that has expertise in nothing but building design that actually helps that committee. So it may be a joint effort. So I'm just trying to clarify this proposal. That's why the rest of the 125 is going to be needed because you're going to have another, and Mary actually talked about that, you know, that it costs money to be able to do the planning that we're going to need. But it may very well be a next layer that's a totally different consultant firm that has a different level of expertise in really building high schools and 21st Century Schools.
My suggestion related not to Arcadis or to a different consulting firm, but to a school-based committee. And I would like to suggest inserting a couple of sentences to indicate that a school-based committee would review drafts of drawings that are intended to show how schools and economic development activities could fit on the site that we have available to us.
So, Mr. Sharp, with respect to the school-based committee, I mean, I agree that there are two things going on here. And I agree that they're largely separate, if only because you can't develop anything unless, until you get the school off the land. So I think, as I conceptualize this, see if I can understand what you're saying, is first of all, I agree that the heavy lifting should be done by a school-based committee with respect to what the school will look like and how the schools, if possible, will make space available for economic development. I think as one sequences it, the big issue is going to be what will a school look like? How would it fit in this transit area? And with economic development, you've got students. And so the flow in terms of critical paths and work will be, get the, vacate land so something else can be done with it. And so that all turns on getting the school done first. And I think that's something that this board, in conjunction with other bodies, should be able to do. But we should begin to work intensively internally. And I think this Arcadis notion is, you know, it's an oversimplification to call it a sketch on a napkin, but it's the beginning of the beginning. Where and how it will unfold, I don't think any of us know now, other than, you know, we do need to begin to see, you know, what's possible and what's completely out of the question. And this will help give us some reality-based start, at which time, I think, then, as a body, we should be in a position to take it to the next level. You know, there were some issues in the planning committee that were raised about approval of budgets for various studying. I'm all in favor of coordination, but I think we need to maintain our prerogatives to do, as a school, what we see as what we think best meets the needs of the schools. And ultimately, the needs of the schools should align with the needs and interests of the city financially because, you know, we need to have a viable, working city with, you know, flows of money that allow us to invest and go forward without overextending ourselves. So is that, am I kind of where you're at, that really what we need to do is to lay the groundwork internally for taking it to the next level at once this thing gets going?
I think you're also headed down the same path that I am suggesting. Your last portion there about financial capability, I think, gets us to a step beyond this, you know, where Arcadis is working is really with concepts, land configurations and school, mainly school configurations, fitting on 70%, whichever segment of the land you consider the 70% to be in. And that's a conceptual process, I think, unrelated to financing. But then, I think you do need to go on to the next step. And I'd suggest that's a separate committee altogether that goes on to that next step. But the first step is more conceptual, program-oriented. And there is a process that takes place there with its own committee process.
And I might just add, I was just trying to think about the document because, and again, it is, it's a lengthy document, and it's gone through so many tweaks.
Here.
Trying to get everybody on the same page because it's just, everybody sees things a little differently. But I think what the piece that you're really talking about is the school master plan is from the vision of the committee that we have in here, which is 2B. So that's like that next where you're talking about the big concept first and then the school master plan. What we've, what they, the way that it's listed in the plan after everyone's tweaked it is that the school will work with construction experts, the community, to determine the school master plan, where we're really drilling down. So I think that that's, I mean, is that, when you've been at the committee, where you're seeing it?
Which page you want, please?
2B is on page eight, where like right now, we're at the very beginning of just trying to help inform this whole committee to kick us off on the big kind of overview. 2B is when we really have that committee that we're going to put together and look at all of the space program needs and the parking and all of those pieces. But I think that was the intent of that section. And again, you know, John or Justin, if I'm misinterpreting, feel free, if you see it in a different way.
Well, if I see the way this is laid out in outline form, Issue One is in 2015. And 2B is even further out than that. And I'm suggesting that we need this review by the, by a committee. And I'm suggesting that we need this review by a committee once these drawings are done by Arcadis this summer.
Oh.
So that would be in the fall of 2014.
Yeah.
Not sometime in late 2015.
Okay.
Never mind. You all cleared it up for me in that conversation. I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence?
I guess the main question is, are you saying before the Arcadis results are presented, another committee should weigh in? Or, once they're presented, then the committee should start weighing in? Because I'll be real honest, the, when I said we moved fast, what I really meant was we were moving way too fast for pretty much the rest of the committee. And we got a lot of pushback about, you know, why are you doing this? And this is too fast? This is going too far? And I think if we go back to them and say, well, we've got, we actually want to put another committee together to look at this before, that's, okay, that's not what you're talking about.
No, no, I hope I was clear earlier in the discussion here, that Arcadis should do this work during the summer.
Right.
And get these drawings done. Okay? And then a committee that is broadly based, represents the different constituencies, can look at these drafts and comment on the drafts.
Right, right.
And say whether this makes sense, whether, you know, things need to be modified here or there. So, no, I'm not saying that the committee, the committee should start and come up with some kind of plan. That's not it.
Okay.
It's our, I like the Arcadis start. Get us a technical drawing, set of drafts together, let a committee comment on those. But get that comment on, in an earlier timeframe than, I think, what is called for by the draft here.
Right, yeah. I mean, right now, Tony, they said they could do this in six weeks.
Yeah, I say five to eight. They're telling me five to six, but I always, depending on our time schedule. So I would say at the max would be eight. We would try to do it in five to six as far as the conceptual aspect. It's just making sure.
That works for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the idea is, before we, you know, take a break in August, this would be, you know, we would have this in hand on the agenda to actually look at in August so that when we go into the fall, yeah, you set up another group and then you keep moving forward. So I think we've all been saying the same thing, just not so well to each other.
Well, again, this, I appreciate the great difficulty in pulling this document together, getting council and Economic Development Authority and Planning Commission and School Board to all, you know, I know how hard this is with just, you know, two or three people trying to come up with something when you have multiple constituents, multiple interests, multiple contributors. Well, I'm just saying that this is, this is one area that I think the draft roadmap, as we have it, I think could be usefully modified and help us to get a step-by-step, move this process to a further useful place on the, on, you know, getting to successful completion.
Quickly.
And do it in a way that makes sense quickly. That's it.
Ms. Ward, I want to make sure that everything that you wanted covered was covered, or if you.
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence or Dr. Jones, just so that we manage expectations, could you explain what the Arcadis deliverable is? It will not be detailed blueprints, correct?
That is correct. It'll be very high-level blocking where they take the property and they will do four different, as long as it's not cost prohibitive. Right now, we've written in three. We do want to get the price on the fourth, make sure we feel good about that. They will do the modeling and have different scenarios for us on that campus. And one thing that the city manager and then also in meeting with the planning members and then you as well, Justin, was to make sure that we charge the architects to do their very best design work where they need to make it fit on 70%. Because then we're really, because it's really easy just to go and say, design a high school on the property we have. We could all do that probably. The difficulty is using 70% and being able to get the program that you actually need. And so we're going to, we're really giving them a tough task. And they may come back, you know, once they sit at the table and say, wow, this can't be done. Well, that'll be very telling. We're hoping that they don't, you know. But I already, when I charged them with that task, just in talking about the document, they went, wow, okay, we'll have to look, make sure that can be done. So, I mean, that was their first reaction, so they know it's a challenge to bring their best skill set for us. Does that help?
Yes, I think so. Anybody have any other questions or comments? I do think, you know, one of the concerns I still have about the roadmap document is that it does, it does have more of a parallel development feel, where I do think this is much more a series where the school has to be completed before development can begin. And as Mr. Sharp alluded to, I think that has serious financial consequences because it means the needs financially for the schools will hit before the cash from the development shows up, with certain exceptions. I mean, you could, there are ways to do it, but in others, I think we need to think about that sequencing. And I think, you know, the best thing we can do as the school board is to address what the needs are. I think, Dr. Jones, one other thing I would ask, because I think it's important for the community to be aware, for a while now, we have used the marker figure of 275,000 square feet. We, in this document with Arcadis, we're talking about 320. And I think that ties in with enrollment projections, expandability, you know, Washington and Lee has trailers only a few years after they finished. Could you speak a bit to the enrollment piece of the equation in this as well? Just high level.
Right. Because of the growth that we're seeing, especially in early childhood, and those cohorts continue to move through, and all of the growth projections from Weldon Cooper, which are based on birth rate, we have upped the building from where, you know, we would have been if we were looking at this two and three years ago. Part of that has to do with our growth rate is different, you know, than Arlington and Alexandria than Fairfax. We are, you know, predicted to be again over 6%, which is a lot. And our strongest growth is still coming in early childhood. Year before last, we were just over 9%. This year, we were 19%, which means large group of children moving through the system continue to grow because you add children to those cohorts almost every year. It's very rare that a cohort actually moves through and doesn't grow, especially where we are in a growth phase right now. So this high school is planning for the future and future enrollment growth.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Any other questions or comments?
Well, just as you made the change from 275 to 320, was there a difference in the year at which you were focusing in terms of the projections so that you were saying, okay, well, this will last us through 2028 instead of 2025? I'm not sure.
And I know we see so much data on the board, but there's a big, long chart, I actually have it in my wall, that shows low, middle, and high projections that we shared during the budget. And if you go back and look at that one, it's, we're trying to go out 15 and 20 years with all of our projections. Right now, the unknown is I've factored in the economic development piece. That's going to be the unknown for us because we have Rushmark, Harris Teeter, and Northgate all coming online within the next 24 to 36 months. So as we work with the city staff and Economic Development Authority, it's really also figuring out, are there going to be more developments coming online? I was in a meeting just the other day working with city staff on West and Broad, which they're calling the Spectrum now. So, you know, it's, it's actually not the Spectrum condo that exists, but I guess it's Spectrum Development Firm. But they're the ones that are looking at West and Broad. So, you know, when people say, and I try to communicate this to city staff, when they ask me to project 15 and 20 years out, we can look at single-family homes, we can look at the birth rate, take all of those components and, you know, create that chart. But if we add another 1,000 units to the city, or we add another 40 split lots, which adds another 40 single-family homes, that can change that chart. So we're doing the very best that we can to be forward-thinking. And the city is too, really seriously looking at the economic development side right now and what they approve and kind of what impacts as far as proffers, you know, to help pay for capital and all those components.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jones. And I would just note at the end of our package today, we have the regular enrollment update that doesn't show things getting smaller. It's sort of steady, steady as she goes.
If we've maybe settled on a modification to the roadmap, I'd like to go back to the appointment of the group, you know, the steering committee going forward. I think that was our thing to approve this evening and.
Okay, just want to make sure, have we addressed everything else on the underlying documents? Just a quick question, was the resolution vote passed yesterday from the, from the steering committee? Is that document now voted on or is it still out there?
I don't think, I don't think that the city council has voted on that yet for us. And we can certainly, you know, do it as a voting item. I don't think the city council has, but I have to double check.
No, I think we, this is listed for discussion and we should defer it, but I think just for the record.
Okay.
Just want to be clear that I don't think it has been passed. Okay, and with that, we'll now go back to the appointments to the process planning steering committee, which we had skipped over. It now will be the, it's not the, it's technically not the process planning steering committee anymore. It would just be the steering committee, but be that as it may.
That's a good point.
Thanks very much for that clarification. The composition of the steering committee in the resolution matches up with our, with our draft proposal tonight for appointments, at least as far as the set members are concerned. The question of whether there would be an alternate, is that, is that covered here in the resolution?
The alternate is addressed in the resolution, yes. I believe it's. No, actually, let's see, that's in the, I believe that's in the rules of procedure, but it is not actually in the resolution.
Yeah, well, those rules of procedure would also.
There's a useful clarification to make.
That the rules of procedure, I guess, would also need to be referenced, perhaps in the resolution or in the roadmap as it's finalized.
Yes, there's an appendix in the roadmap that does, I believe, have that in it. But it did not make it to the resolution. Good catch, Mr. Sharp.
Well, I'd just like to say, as far as the structure of this whole thing is concerned, I think it is, it is helpful to have a steering committee that is roughly of this composition and have it be a process planning committee and not a substantive decision-making body. And I know there's maybe some concern that it will morph into a substantive decision-making body, but I think, I think the solution to that is to make sure that there are some parallel things happening at the same time, like the Arcadis and the committee process that we just discussed a while ago. And that those, that those processes are appropriately tailored to the question that's substantively at hand. In other words, it isn't just a bare bones, you know, broadly representative group like the steering committee, it's more, it's more concentrated and it's more representative related to the substance of the question. Okay? If we keep those parallel processes in mind as the steering committee is working, I think there won't be this vacuum for the steering committee to feel like it has to fill because something's not happening in the program development area or something's not happening in the budget development area. Okay? So I think this works for me in terms of coordination and I'm ready to move on to approving the group to go with the steering committee, again, with that understanding that this steering committee is continuing as a process planning group and that there will be parallel substantive decision-making groups that come into existence at appropriate times at the coordination of the steering committee.
Okay, do I, do I have a motion?
I recommend that the school board approve the appointments of school board members Susan Kearney, John Lawrence to the GM, MEH, Process and Planning Steering Committee, and school board member Justin Castillo as an alternate.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on, sections, okay, our next item is authorization of signatures for assistant superintendents.
Sorry. This is just so they can sign off officially on documents, especially when I'm absent, which is all the time, not really, but it gives them the authority.
Do I get a motion?
Chair, I have moved that the board approve the authorization of signatures for assistant superintendent Lisa High and assistant superintendent Hunter Kimball in the absence of the division superintendent through June 30, 2016.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions? Okay. STEM update, Dr. Jones.
This was actually a request of Mr. Ann Kumas, that we actually have this as an agenda item, so I just wanted to update the school board tonight. I will be bringing, we'll be doing our work plan review and update this summer where we start looking at next year. And it will be a request of mine that we actually have a STEM advisory committee like we did for technology this year. We're at that point where STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math is really moving rapidly. And we want to make sure that we're connected in all of our buildings pre-K through 12. As you know, we have a STEM lab at TJ in our new building design at Mount Daniel, they'll also have a STEM lab. We're having a lot of requests at high school right now for computer science, and we're really trying to reevaluate what we're doing for computer science because the demand is growing. It used to be a course that students took as elective when they were juniors and seniors. Now it's a course, children are, children, students, young people are coming out of middle school and they're already starting their coding, and so they're looking for it in high school. So we'll be having.
Ma'am, and we've also, next year, we're adding STEM at Mary Ellen Henderson.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Kimball, yes, in our budget. But we really want to make sure the curriculum really flows for that. So we'd like an advisory committee that really looks at those four components very closely and intertwined.
Any questions on that?
Just a comment, and this is something that Dr. Jones and I have discussed before, but that if that advisory committee is created, that that would be an appropriate one to place a student on, seeing as it directly relates to all the curriculum that they would be dealing with.
And I might just comment on that too, Maeve. I kind of see this as being a whole group of students, which even on our technology advisory committee, we've had two different meetings where students came and it was so valuable for us. We had, I don't know if it was our last meet, I think it was our last meet, where we had probably six or seven students there. And so we see that really valuable. And on that committee as well, we want to make sure we have a team of students, and especially for STEM. So we'll make sure that happens.
From a variety of schools and grades as well. Thank you.
And I think that's a good point, Ms. Curtin. I think one of the things that we should think about going forward is with respect to the advisory committees and student input, how we can get input from all levels of students. Because I think that's important. So, Mr. Wood. Wood, so I will, I look forward to hearing your ideas about that. All right, next, construction update, Dr. Jones.
Okay, and I just have to make a comment. One of the, one of the challenges is of getting TJ, just, and I know that you, you'll think of this, but our advisories are often in the evenings and our little people go to bed early, so it's not that we don't want to invite them, but their moms and dads have to feel like they can, you know, they're the type of student that can stay up a little bit later, but.
And we ran into that problem even with some students from MEH earlier this year with the preschool naming committee, so, you know, we'll have to look into that a little bit more, but.
Lucky you, Zach.
Okay, so construction update, okay. For construction with pre-K right now, in all honesty with pre-K, we're, we're trying to really move forward. We've had some, some hiccups just with the permitting side, and it really has to do more tying this project with the city stormwater. That has been probably a greater challenge than we've thought. I was working with Mr. Shields today, asking for his assistance because we need to get this really moving at a much faster pace, so I'm working on that. With TJ, we actually had the final billing sign-off today for Task One. I had requested that they get it by tonight for Task One and Task Two. The only reason Task Two has not been signed off is that we know there's about, there's cost savings, and what happens with cost savings, that $60,000, is they have to go, of course, in very detail, make sure we know where every penny goes, and we get 75% of that, Heskett's 25, so it'll be at least probably $45,000 that we will get back. So, we want to make sure we have that number correct so we don't give up even one little penny, so. And then we've talked a lot about GM, MEH, so I think that we're okay without Mount Daniel, we've also talked about with the ordinance tonight.
And please, about stormwater, if you will, at GM, we've had some difficulties with the roof leaking during storms at GM, and I wonder if there is some thought to assessing where those happen to be coming from and whether repairs can be made prior to the opening of school for next year.
In all honesty, GM is really, really, really old, and we had, we did lots of repairs this year. We've had them out all year long. Every time you get one of those huge big rains, another hole opens up, so it's really trying to get through. It kind of ties to all this other work that we're doing. You know, do we go and spend a million dollars on roof when we, trying to get a handle on what the timing's going to look like, so we've been trying to do the fixes, but we've, we have the roofers out there, I mean, on a weekly basis, and it's just, you can't necessarily see them, and some of the rains we've had have been really heavy, and they just, and a lot of them are not coming through the actual roof. People think their roof leaks, but it's actually like, it could be a place in the mortar where it's coming through, you know, where the roof and the wall are meeting, it's, that can be a leaky window. But, so we, it's been a challenge for us, admittedly. And, you know, we had awards two weeks ago, I think it was, and we had to get the trash can out and put it on the stage. It was not pleasant, but it does give, I guess, the message across that we need a new high school, which is the only positive, having a trash can in the middle of awards. But they are, they're, they're up on the roof every single week, and we had a detailed look at the roof last summer to try to make sure we could get every area we knew where the leaks were, but it's been a challenge.
Is, is it a question of needing funding to, to do more to alleviate the problem?
No, we actually re-roofed, I mean, a lot of the GM building this summer. It's just new leaks keep springing up, so it's not, has not been a funding issue. Now, if we want to do the whole building and just go and say, we're going to go re-roof the whole building, that's, you know, and that may be something if we are still having these issues in the fall that we may want to look at for the CIP, but it's, it is a big chunk of money that you're going to be spending while we're waiting on the high school. But it's also a problem having it leak the way that it does. But it's just, it's, I mean, and Mr. Kimball, you're, feel free to weigh in, but they did a huge thorough look of the roof and fixed every area that we knew was leaking, and we just keep getting new ones. It really needs a new roof, and we've, we've tried to delay that until we knew the timing of the project.
And, and which is why, one, one of the items in next year's, New Year's budget, we do have, you know, ongoing maintenance, funding budgeted. That was one of the items that, that we recommended that the board reduce. It's what went from, I believe, $225,000 down to about $175,000, something like that, but there are funds there, and that has been the traditional source of when we, we have these issues. We had these issues a couple of years ago, I think four or five years ago at Thomas Jefferson, and those have since obviously been addressed. But, you know, that, that's where we turn to in terms of funding source to address these things when they do come up.
I just want to ask about that roof. Have, has any study been done to make sure it's not affecting the integrity of the roof, like it's not going to collapse on anyone?
They did a thorough assessment last summer of the roof. We brought people in to do that for us because it's, it's too big of a project for our own staff, and that's why they repaired huge sections of the roof where we knew we were having issues. So, there's no safety concerns with the roof. Really, most of the leaks, I mean, because it comes from the, up here, people always think it's the roof, but it's really a lot of the other challenges, door frames, windows, HVAC units that it creeps in the side, and in an old building, all the seals that are around things, and it's just, it's a challenge, because everything is old in that building.
Yes, I know. Okay, thank you.
That's actually a cold comfort to realize there's, it's not always the roof, it's something else as well. Any other questions? All right, moving on to resolutions, the VSB-A media honor roll. We have resolutions before us today, and there are documents going around. I hope everybody has signed the various resolutions. We have two this evening recognizing Nicholas Benton, publisher and editor-in-chief of the Falls Church News Press, and Steven Siegel of the Falls Church Times for their ongoing reporting relating to community issues, including and especially the Falls Church City Public Schools. Do I have a motion here on, on those resolutions?
I move the school board approve and adopt the 2014 VSB-A media honor roll resolutions for, as presented, recognizing Nicholas Benton, publisher and editor-in-chief of the Falls Church News Press, and Steven Siegel of the Fosters Times for their ongoing exemplary nature of reporting on the Falls Church City Public Schools to the community.
Thank you. Why don't we do a voice vote on this, please?
Good. Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Sharp.
Aye.
Ms. Ward.
Aye.
And Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Thank you.
And I would just say that even in a small community such as Falls Church where news gets around quickly and readily, these, these media outlets, the Falls Church News Press and the Falls Church Times are indispensable assets, and I think they really add to our, to our sense of community. We now move to the, sir, oh, excuse me, Maeve, I'm sorry, I had that little target fixation on the agenda here.
It's okay. I would just like to say that especially with the news press in school, when you see students reading it around the halls and get very excited to see things written about their classmates or about themselves, I think it's really great, and I've seen the same thing with the Times online, so I just, we really, really do appreciate the recognition that we give our school system and the way we're able to highlight all the students, and not just the sports teams, and not just, you know, the drama department, but really every aspect of our school system, because all of our students are so wonderful and do excel in their own ways, so it's really great that we have these wonderful people who are willing to recognize that for us.
And Ms. Curtin, I'd say you were remiss in not tooting the horn of the lasso, which I think often has some really fascinating and sometimes, I would say, maybe not groundbreaking, but they cover things that nobody else covers and they do a very good job of it, so maybe, maybe we'll see them up here next year as well. So with that, we can move on now to discussion and possible action to adjust school start times. Dr. Jones?
Well, this is kind of a task, I think, that, you know, I hear probably more than anything else from SAOs and parents, it's the 7:30 a.m. start time for middle school. It's early, you know, you can't find anything instructionally that supports middle school, you know, growing adolescents having to wake up at the crack of dawn and start school at 7:30. And so, at the request of SAOs, we started exploring, working with Transportation Department. We also worked with Gibson Consulting when they were here on the efficiency study. They actually timed all the bus routes, so we knew, had more information even just about how long does it take to run a high school route, how long does it take to run all of our middle school routes. We also did an early survey just to get an idea of, you know, how many people really support, support changing the start time. And one of the components that, that we wanted to know was, you know, does it have to be four different routes in order to make this work, or is there a way to consolidate and run MEH and GM at exactly the same time? There's a lot of instructional benefit to that. But as we really got into the process, we had a couple of challenges, and the first graph that you look at is where it just talks about, would you like to see MEH start around eight instead of 7:30, just getting a general idea from the community, and very, very supportive. But when you got into the actual other parts of the survey, they don't, there was pushback in that parents were nervous about middle schoolers and high schools riding the bus together to run one route, and it's almost impossible just to have two buses following each other around. So you, you know, that was something we needed to get feedback from. We also wanted to know from middle school, high school parents, especially middle school, if we expanded the walking zone, like we do for high school, would the parents support expanded walking zone, and they really didn't. Especially, several comments were even about the sixth graders, the parents just don't like their kids walking, you know, that young, which we weren't really surprised by that. We were probably a little bit surprised that their, the kids riding together made them nervous, because it used to be that way here, and so many of us, I think, have either, you know, been educators in systems, or we grew up in systems where that was just the norm. But our community, we, you know, listened to that, so we then went out and surveyed again, which is the, the second one, because after we did our study and really looking at route times, and as a reminder, we did pull the bus out of FY14, we've also pulled a bus out of FY15. So the last thing we wanted to do is put in a plan where all of a sudden you have 12% enrollment growth in September, and we're short buses. Now, we're still hopeful that we'll be able to get those buses through the CIP, but we can't count on that. So, the next piece that we surveyed was, in order to eliminate a 7:30 start time, it, and I will say, this pre-K time was actually, it's not the school start time, and we clarified that with our pre-K parents, it should have been eight, but they do get dropped off early. So some parents were like, is that when they get dropped off, or is that when they start school? Looking at pre-K with an eight o'clock start, GM with an eight o'clock start, because we can run those two together, we've done that this year, which is what GM does now. MEH would be at 8:10, which is, you know, 40 minutes difference for a middle schooler is, is a big deal. The one thing about to get that work is Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, it extends their school day a little bit, which I really like. Now, I will say, the students weren't so keen on that piece. They liked sleeping in a little bit more in the morning. They would still like to get out at 2:30 though, which, that doesn't, doesn't work well, can't have it both ways. Parents were very supportive. Then at TJ would be 8:45, 3:45, so it pushes them back just a little bit. And the graph you're looking at is giving you the reflection of how that kind of plays out. The green was the support for the change, the blue is no, we prefer not to change, and then the orange was we really don't care. Either way, works for our family. So, it's been supportive for the start time change. The other aspects, and I'm sure Maeve may, could probably chime in on this if I remember correctly from the beginning of the year, one of the, one of the things that happened this year in moving eighth grade back is, in order to make the after-school athletics and activities work, it really has had a big impact, I feel like, and, and they can correct me as students if Zach and Maeve think I'm wrong, but in our club structure, because we had to change when athletics started, because we hang on to our middle schoolers right now, the eighth graders that are in JV for that half hour, and quite frankly, if you ask, I mean, I, the principal and I, the study hour doesn't work that great, it's right after school, it's 30 minutes, it's kind of like a holding pin for 30 minutes for our eighth graders, but it's impacting our high school because they are getting out, and I believe it's 15 minutes after you guys get out, they have to be at practice. And so, they can't, they're having to make those difficult choices. Well, this club meets after school, they used to be able to go, or to go see a teacher for half an hour to get help with their high school calculus or whatever. They've lost that. And so, the start time change kind of impacts all these different areas, and it allows everybody to have a reasonable time that you're getting to school, reasonable time that you're getting out, and doesn't have huge impacts on anybody, but helps our middle schoolers, you know, tremendously. So I am support of changing, and I think our, you know, the survey is supportive to say that, and you're still, we will probably hear some people that don't like it, that we have some teachers that like getting out at 2:30 because they, it's better for their commute, and then we have other teachers who like getting out a little bit later because they have daycare issues and other things, so, you know, the teachers are pretty split at MEH. I think high school teachers were more supportive because of the club structures and the things they know where it's impacted high school. So that would be, I mean, that's, that's kind of the overview of what's happened this year, the survey data, you know, 700 and 800 responses is a lot when you, when you're surveying the community, trying to get responses back. So, I feel like we've, they've had a strong voice. SAOs were very strong when our, through our SAO meetings this year, and really wanted, you know, one of the reasons I took this under, undertaking was because we were, I was asked to, to see if there's any way to, to help our middle school kids not have to be at school at 7:30. And this really is it. I mean, with the buses that we have, with the time constraints that we have, this, this is it, and listening to the community, because we cannot run three routes with the buses we have.
Dr. Jones, just one thing to clarify a little bit about the club and the sports practice start times. Originally, that was sort of the perception that it was because of middle school, and we didn't want to keep them at school too long, and so that's why we moved the start time back. But after more conversations with Coach Horn, it seems that the larger reasoning has to do with accountability at the high school, and that Coach Horn is not comfortable having students unsupervised for the 45-minute period that it was before, and so now, because of liability reasons, that's why practices have been pushed up, and it just so happened to coincide with the eighth grade move, and that's sort of what allowed that change to happen so quickly.
Well, I could tell you, we've been in discussions just, I mean, actually today about that. He's very supportive of the time change and sees the positives. Maybe that's living through it for the year, maybe that's where he was at the beginning of the year, but he also understands that it's been difficult for high school students, and I think you guys have had a strong voice to say it's messed up your club structure, so maybe he's changed his mind, but he's very supportive of the change.
That was sort of my goal. We've, we've talked about it a lot.
Yeah. And he is, in his new title, he's over student activities as well, so maybe that helps as well, not just athletics, so.
Other questions? We've got a little green light over there.
I want to say I support it. I like the idea. I think 7:30 is an extremely early start time, and I, as a parent, I lived through it. It wasn't fun.
Thank you. Just one question, Dr. Jones, with respect to the eighth graders at MEH who would be playing JV sports, possibly. How does that work?
Well, for practice, they would get out at 3:20, and Mr. Horn would move, I believe it was 3:45, move back to the 3:45 start for all the practices. So they still have a little bit of time to go see a teacher or change, or do what they need to do, but not such a big gap that they're, they're running around as eighth graders.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you for that creative. And just one other question with, with respect to, the number of responses seems pretty robust, but in, in terms of percentages of total number of families and students, is this, how many people out of the whole population have responded?
Well, you know, we have.
Approximately?
Yeah. That's a really hard, that's a really hard question. Probably the MEH one was easier because it was just MEH, so that was, and that was mainly, you know, parents and teachers. The one on, the, the one on the bottom was very mixed with parents, teachers, and students, so, you know, I could, I can get you those numbers, I can disaggregate the data and tell you what it looks like. Actually, if you even go down on the bottom, you can see like the parents that, and some of them, it just wasn't an interest to, you know, there are people that, especially if you have a little kid that's in second grade, I mean, or first grade, they haven't experienced the 7:30, so definitely they're much more passionate when you get into middle and high school. Although TJ, when I'm looking here, there were 199 yeses, 81 no, and 10 didn't matter. So they actually had a pretty good response, they had 200 responses from that, you know, and that's 700 students, so.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, the next item on the agenda concerns the selection of VSB-A delegate, delegate and alternate.
Now, can I? Now, can I ask, are we considering changing the start time? Or is this because that was on there for possible action? Because if we don't change it tonight, then we really are going to go another year. And I, you know, and I'm okay either way. But this is the only change that, that we can make work with the buses we have. So if we want to change off to 7:30, it's kind of, I would be bringing you the same solution next April, so.
I support this.
It would seem that we have broad-based consensus. Does anybody have any other thoughts about this? I guess my only thought is, are we really sure? We've heard from everybody. Will there, we do from time to time get feedback from community members about calendars and schedules-
Absolutely.
And have we socialized this sufficiently?
I think that, you know, when you survey, if you have 30% of people that don't like it, you're, we're probably going to hear from the 30%. I mean, you know, and so I think the voice of the many, definitely on SAO group, there's, there's no questions with our, with our parent groups that they want to see this change. But a lot of them have lived through it. You know, they've had middle schoolers that they were trying to get out of bed. And it's hard. It's a really difficult age anyway, and it's, 7:30 is early. And it's not even just 7:30. It's, you know, you have to have them at the bus way before that.
And it's dark.
And it's dark, and, yeah. So I just, I think the positives far outweigh the negatives. But will we have some pushback from some people who are going to be cranky? Certainly. I think anytime you make a decision, you know, and you've got 30% of people that would just like to keep it 7:30, we'll probably hear from the 30%, I'm sure.
I just want to make sure we don't hear from 60.
Right.
So could we authorize you to go ahead and announce this?
Sure.
And if there's, if they're surrounding the central office with pitchforks and torches, you can reconsider that.
I will say, so moved as to authorizing, but I will, I will cut off the pitchfork.
Do I have a motion then?
I move the authorization of the superintendent to move forward with the change of the school start time for the 2014-15 school year.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Oops, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I have to second. Second.
Now, with that second in place, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, everybody gets to sleep in a little bit, which may enable procrastination on some people's parts that much more, based on my experience. So now, we move to the next item on the agenda regarding selection of VSBA delegates and See here that we have not populated the selections. We have, we have people in place now. I don't know if you have any thoughts, Dr. Jones, or should we, if it's not broken, don't fix it, but, you know, let's.
The only thing that, that I would just, you know, offer as a reminder is just making sure that Mr. Sharp and Ms. Ward are sure that they would be able to go in November, that they feel pretty good that you can get time off work to go to, to represent. So just making sure, you know, that that's part of it, is being there at the VSBA convention.
Yeah, and I think I have adequate time to plan for that. Thank you.
Well, I think it's currently Margaret Ward as the delegate and is John as the alternate?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm happy to give, to offer some advice from my earlier experience, but I'm sort of conflicted out of-
So you are, okay, I want, that's, that was my question, was whether-
Of any intense participation.
Right. Okay, so, do I have a motion?
Guess I'm the motion guy tonight.
You are a man in motion today.
I move that the school board approved the selection of Margaret Ward as a VSBA delegate and John Lawrence as a VSBA alternate to represent Foster City Public Schools at the VSBA Delegate Assembly and Regional Meeting of 2014 VSBA Annual Conference.
All right, thank you, Mr. Webb. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. And now, we have the issue of future agenda items. Anything you want to talk about? Mr. Sharp?
Okay. One that I've asked about earlier is alignment of the Foster Education Foundation with school board plans. And I'd like to specify in there a, a request to discuss whether the Education Foundation should be seen as a potential fundraising source for any portion of facilities development.
And we actually do have a date for that. We've been working with Mrs. Scott because she had her vacation, we were working around. And I believe, Marty, I'm not sure if you have that with you? Did we?
July 15th.
July 15th, okay.
The work session.
The other one, we had a work session on, and we haven't had as yet a chance to follow up. Perhaps that's already been scheduled. And that has to do with the board organization.
And I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, in our planning, that that's part of the work plan as well, is looking at that?
Yes.
Yeah.
And there, I'd just like to clarify that I think as we heard in our work session discussion, the, the, the issues relate not just to whether we should have, you know, like two members of the board form a committee, but, but also our, our committee structure, our advisory committee structure, and how that relates to board decision-making. And that, you know, a, a consideration of how, how we currently operate in that fashion and how we could improve it is, is, is part of that discussion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sharp. Any, anything else?
First time on the microphone. Okay, um, with the previous year, I experienced-
Just sit a little-
Sorry. I was planning to have an extended exchange student, not through the exchange program, and I realized there was a Foster City Public Schools ban on exchange students except for, at least at George Mason. I'm not sure if it was schools system-wide or solely at George Mason. But I was wondering if there was a possibility to either add a limited amount of spaces for exchange students or to simply open it up to exchange students in general?
Yeah, and, and I will say, it's not really necessarily a ban. And when we get a new high school, we'd love to open it back up again. But it's had, it has been driven by seats and numbers of kids. And we don't get any revenue whenever we have an exchange student. And so, you know, even with our tuition students, we allow very few. And then they're actually, you know, paying a minimal to be there. But it really has to do with seats and, and numbers of kids. And, you know, we're lucky that we have an international community, at least, you know, as part of our student body. But we would love to open that back up again, and then when we have a chance to expand, we certainly will, will look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, because we see great value in it. We just don't have any seats.
So if we get rid of one student, we can take one on, it sounds like. It's a one-for-one exchange. Okay, well, thank you for that, Mr. Woodson. Anything else, anyone? All right, Dr. Jones, your report. Take it away.
All righty. You have heard a lot from me tonight, so I'll try to be brief. This is just a fun time of year. We have awards and field days, and usually they hope it rains so they can roll in the mud at, you know, MEH. But I don't know if it's supposed to rain again. Graduation is on the 16th, so I encourage you to come. It's going to be another fabulous event. It's, it's always just, it's such a beautiful venue, but it's just, that's really what we're all about, is making sure, you know, all of our students walk across the stage at the end of that 12th grade year. So I encourage you to come and join us there. I will be down in Radford this weekend for the playoffs, and so we'll keep you posted. Or you can follow Twitter and see what's happening down there. Looking forward to that. There are just a lot of great things happening in our schools and trying to stay focused and, and keep everybody enjoying school, but where it's not just wasteful for the last couple of days, you know, of school. Keeping people focused is not always easy this time of the year. And other than that, it's just full steam ahead to, to close out the end of the year. So it's going great.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jones. Moving on now to board and student liaison comments. I will begin with you, Ms. Curtin.
Well, I just want to say, what a pleasure it's been to serve in this position. I want to thank all of you guys for making it such an easy thing for me to do, for always being so supportive of myself and the position in general. And I know that you will continue to extend that help and support to Zach as he continues on, and, you know, in future years, because that's really what this is about, making sure that the students continue to have a voice in our system. Because we do, you know, I think it's been really beneficial, and I think we have so many students who really want to and can contribute and help us in that way. I want to thank Mr. Lawrence, as Mr. Cassio mentioned earlier at the beginning of the meeting, for really pushing for this position and helping me out last, I guess, November now, and since I've been on since February. It's been a wonderful time, and, you know, I'd probably be lying if I said I enjoyed every minute of it. In fact, I would be. But it really has been such a wonderful experience, and I've learned so much from each and every one of you, just about commitment and dedication to community, about procedural things that will be so helpful to me later in life. And hopefully, you know, I can continue on in some sort of capacity to serve Falls Church or some other community. But it's just been, it's been so great, and I'm, you know, trying not to get emotional and really tell too many stories or anything like that. And I know I don't want to be the one talking for the longest. But thank you guys so much for everything. And I'll be back, I'll visit. So, thank you. I'm just really grateful to have had this opportunity.
Well, thank you again for everything you've done, Maeve. You've been a, you're a tough act to follow, but I'm sure that Mr. Woodson will, will do a great job. Ms. Ward?
I'm reporting as the Athletic Boosters Liaison. I really wanted to mention a new scholarship that the Athletic Boosters started. It's in memory of Judy Lubnow. It is funded by her family, partially. I don't know if any of you remember Judy, but she was a driving force in the community and this, at Mace, in all the schools, actually, and especially with the Athletic Boosters. She was tireless volunteer. She was, you could always count on her for anything. She would organize the sports banquet, and you just name it. She was there, she was at all her son's baseball games. Just a wonderful lady who, who certainly left this world way too soon, leaving some young children behind. And this scholarship, which was presented for the first time last night at the sports banquet, was given to a student, a student athlete who, not necessarily for their athletic abilities, but more for their spirit and how they supported their teammates and boosted people's, you know, their spirit and, you know, got them moving in the right direction. Real supportive person. And I'm happy to report that, I have, I'm sorry, the name, I have a hard time with it, but Natanim, I think, Teshom?
Natanim Teshom, yeah.
Thank you.
And she's great. She deserves it more than anyone. I played lacrosse with her.
Lovely young lady. And I, she's the goalie for the girls' lacrosse team. And I understand she just started playing, and she's just doing a fabulous job.
Yeah, that's correct. And we really couldn't have done the season without her. And she's just so cheerful and goes to all the games and everything. So really did embody the spirit of Mrs. Lubnow.
Thank you. And, and she also is a basketball manager, yes? Yeah. Anyway, so I'm just happy to report that, that new addition to the Athletic Boosters scholarships. And I'm happy to report that Judy is being remembered for her wonderful spirit and her just tireless energy.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Mr. Webb?
Don't have any reports this evening. The Foster Education Association is actually meeting this evening as well, so I had the conflict of here and there. So I will speak with Debbie and get some, any pertinent information, at least to come back to the board for the next meeting.
All right, Mr. Lawrence.
Just a couple of quick things. The Gifted and Talented Committee had their, their last meeting of the year, and they had Liz Germer came and talked about how you take, you know, special ed and gifted and talented and realize that they're not mutually exclusive and how you, you know, recognize special talents in, in ways that aren't, you know, able to be recognized by tests. So I think it was a very good turnout. And we had our, the new applicant who we just approved today to, to join, went there, spoke out. She is going to be a, a great addition. So I think that's, that's, that was just a wonderful, wonderful thing to see. The TSA, the Technology Student Association Recycling Event at, at MEH a couple of weeks ago was an absolute scream. If you want to have fun with kids, give them screwdrivers and teach them how to tear motherboards out of computers and take chips apart. We must have done about 40 of them. I mean, there was this, this one mother there who swore she didn't know anything about it, and at the end, she was just ferocious at tearing things apart and separating them out. So they, I think they made quite a bit of money. Secondly, Tony, I think it's next week we go meet with the Mount Daniel Association? So we're, we're continuing, the Fairfax Neighborhood Association has a meeting, and they asked us to come and, and talk to them about the, the latest. And we've been keeping them up to date, keeping John Faust, the supervisor, up to date, Janie Strauss, the school board member from Drainsville. So we're trying to, you know, keep everybody informed so we, you know, eliminate any possible problems. And then, you know, just a few words on Maeve. You know, I don't know why, but I feel proud. She's, you know, not, not my kid. I've known her for years, entrusted my son to her, you know, when she's a babysitter. So she's, she's kind of like family. And what I love about her is, A, she's everywhere. She, she doesn't sleep at all, it seems. But she always takes the initiative. I mean, she, you know, she's the one who, who came to us and said, why don't you have a student representative? She founded the Best Buddies chapter. She's at every fundraiser. And, you know, I'm just going to miss her. She's, you know, only going to UVA, I know, and she'll be back often. And she's just down the block, but this is, you're just great. So thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Sharp?
Well, this weekend, you're probably aware, is the Tanner Hill Festival, mainly in Jerry Hill Park for the, for free events. But there are also ticketed events at various places, various times. And it started with just a handful of people, meeting at, at, at one time out in, out in the front of the Mary Ann Henderson parking lot. And it has grown into a really regional blues festival. So I encourage you to take part, enjoy it this weekend. I was very pleased to enjoy the Memorial Day with our walk, but I must say, I enjoyed the, the ceremony at 11 o'clock, especially this, this, this year. Harry Shovlin, a former middle school teacher with us, is the organizer and, and emcee for the event. And he does a terrific job each time. He recruited for this occasion a former city manager for Falls Church, Tony Griffin, who, after a few years as city manager here in Falls Church, then went on to be assistant county executive in Fairfax County, and then became, was for 12 years, the county executive in Fairfax County, is now retired. He also had Dave Tartar, the mayor, and the Falls Church Concert Band as part of the, the program. And I just want to mention a couple of things about, about the, what transpired there. Tony Griffin gave quite a, a good speech about his experience as, in the Marine Corps. And that his assessment was that that was the most important- was that that was the most important job that he ever had. Despite his successes in city, local government administration, his, his assessment was that that was, that was the most important work he had ever done. That was as a Marine Corps lieutenant in, in Vietnam. Dave Tartar sort of talked about something along that same line, saying that, you know, it isn't, it isn't the poet who's provided us with freedom of speech. It's the soldier. It isn't the politician who protects our rights to a trial by jury. It's the, it's the soldier. So there was quite a, and Dave was drawing upon a literary compilation of those different roles that the soldier brings to our, to our community and to our nation. The band of that day, the concert band, did a wonderful rendition of a instrumental performance. I'd never heard it before. It's called Normandy. And it's intended as a, all the different sound effects created by the orchestra of the morning and the assault on June sixth, nineteen forty-four, of the assault on the Normandy Beach. And it's just, it just takes your breath away. It was really, really well done. And I hope many will have a chance to hear that done on subsequent Memorial Days. It was just, just outstanding. Another very moving event that I was able to attend was the Student Awards. And I would ask if someone has a, has a compilation of the different scholarships and awards that were provided on that evening, if put that on our materials for board review or otherwise get it distributed to us. I'd enjoy seeing that all again. But there were, there were so many highlights of, and particularly remembrances of, of great leaders in our community, starting with, with Don Frady, who was both, you know, a great, great civic leader and a great, great public administrator for our, he was, he was public works director for many, many years. And then contributors from, from the school administration, all the way from Mary Pace, who was a school administrator in Fairfax County, and the wife of our own superintendent, Dr. Pace. And then the Sprags, Nancy Sprague certainly being an administrator here and in Fairfax County. And then Jessie Thackeray and her family, of course, Franklin and Jessie both have scholarships that are in their, in their names. And it was, it was great to hear those awards being given. Also, thank you very much for accommodating Lou Olem at the IB Awards. That's very, very kind of you to make sure that he was able to be a part of that. I've been working with Partnership for Youth, as you know, for quite a long time, fifteen years, actually. That organization is going through a difficult transition. Their budget was, was not funded by the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors for this upcoming fiscal year. They're looking at various options, including merging or partnering with another organization. And there's really quite a bit of important work, I think, still to be done in the youth service area that, that isn't being accommodated at the moment. Mentoring, mental wellness in the youth sector is very, very underserved, I would say. And I think that there are too many tragic occurrences that we see around us that, that confirm that, that, that those services are, are not adequate at this time. So I hope that we'll see some improvement on that front. I will just mention that this issue of Medicaid and Medicaid expansion at the state level, it's, it's an interesting issue. It's one that, that I think people have different opinions about. But I'll just say one thing that I've learned in regard to mental, mental health services for youth, is that with Medicaid, one of the reasons that it's underserved is that the Medicaid reimbursement for the providers is too low. And providers are not able to stay in business and serve a great many of Medicaid patients. And so there's, in addition to just, you know, this issue of Medicaid expansion, there's the issue of the adequate reimbursement of the providers who do take Medicaid patients. The, the straight-out expansion won't, won't change, isn't going to change that right away. And we need some reform of that system in order to, to have an upgrade in the availability of treatment. So I look forward to working further on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. I was, I was pleased to hear about the scholarship in Judy Lubnow's name. I think that's fitting and very appropriate. And I think that's a great, a great way to remember her legacy. I don't know when last we met, but I don't think we've met since the Falls Church Education Foundation Gala. And we would be remiss to not note that somehow, defying the odds, they did an even better job than they did last year. It was, it was really quite, quite a great affair. There was a great concert of the sixth and seventh grades last night at MEH, among a lot of other things. I echo Mr. Sharp's observations about the awards assembly at George Mason. Really a great way to cap off what's been a great year for, for an outstanding class. I would also be remiss if I don't wish the girls' soccer team luck and success on Friday, and then I hope Saturday as well. You know, with, with respect, I guess in closing, a good way to tie some of this off, we have, you know, Judy Lubnow, we have Lou Olem, Jessie Thackeray, Steve Sprague, all the way up to, to Maeve. And one of the things that I remember from governor's school that my daughter attended down at Randolph Makin was the provost gave a speech that I think is appropriate as you consider Memorial Day. And that is how important it is that we make this country worth fighting for. And I think these people have done that. And I think that's what's great about Falls Church. And with that, Zach, I will let you have the last word. This is initiation, right? So you have to come up with something.
I'm just so glad to be here and to have this incredible opportunity. And I was kind of scared to follow in Maeve's footsteps, but I think we'll make do. And I'm just, it's just incredible to be in a community which opens, opens its arms to a position of, to allow students to really speak their voice. And I've heard so many excited students tell me things that they want to hear done. And it's just great to have that passion of everyone and have it, just get to be someone embodied of their students' passion. So I'm just really excited to have a great year ahead of us. And once again, thank you all for accepting us and me and Maeve and just having this position. Thanks.
All right.
Actually, I'd like the last word.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. When everyone was welcoming you, welcoming you aboard, Zach, I didn't have the, I was multitasking. And I wanted to tell, tell you how happy I am that you are our new student board member. And Maeve, I will miss you. And like John said, you are like, you're proprietary to us. You are like, like, I do feel proudly about you as I would my own child. And Zach, you do have big shoes to fill. But I think you are going, she's going to pass that mantle over to you, and you're going to fill it fine. And we're very, looking forward to having you with us for the next year or so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Zach, you don't have to get the last, last word in. All right. We now have minutes from May first, May sixth, and May twentieth to approve by unanimous consent. And we have materials for board review relating to enrollment for your review. And with that, we will stand adjourned. So thank you very much. Have a good night.